Good evening, everyone. Dr. Benitez will lead us in the pledge.
We're missing our student school board member.
Yeah. They pieced out.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here on the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the Board or to the staff. In closed session today, the Board voted to approve a settlement agreement in a special education matter, providing consideration and release. The vote was unanimous with all five members participating in the vote. Public hearing, we have none. Call for agenda items for separate action?
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board. Staff wishes to pull items number 23 and 34 on the purchasing and contract report.
I move approval of the agenda as corrected.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five zero. Approval of minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five zero. Communications? We have some retirees to recognize, so we will start at this end with Mrs. Kerr.
Yes, and as we call your name, we ask if you could come forward to the podium. We'll read a resolution, which is a great summary of the work you've done here in Long Beach Unified, and ask that you come around so we can congratulate you and shake your hand, and then you can go back to the podium and make some brief remarks if you like. Would Ramona Loxson please come forward? Good evening. Whereas Ramona Loxson is retiring after 21 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas she has served the students of the district as a teacher and education manager for Head Start and EduCare, and whereas she is a caring and enthusiastic teacher who uses a wide variety of approaches to meet the needs of her students, incorporating the development of critical thinking skills throughout her lessons, and whereas she has been responsive to the needs and challenges of those she's supervised, providing hands-on support to instructional staff, and she relished working directly with students, earning the respect and appreciation of parents and colleagues, and whereas she was extremely effective in collaborating with community partners, helping to ensure that children with special needs were identified early and provided with effective services, and she stayed current on research regarding infant and toddler learning and care, and her innovative thinking led to the delivery of quality services to students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Ramona Loxson for her significant and lasting contribution to the education of thousands of students.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor. And that's a very pretty dress.
Thank you.
I thank the Long Beach Unified School District, Head Start, Mr. Steinhauser, and the Board for giving me the opportunity to serve our young children and their families. I've always been blessed to get paid doing something I love and passionate about, working with young children and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Yes, Barry Baker. Barry, I just had a chat the other day as we were preparing to do the graduation at CAMHS, and couldn't believe it, he was saying he was stepping down, but you in fact were telling the truth, Barry. Because I have your resolution right here in front of me. Whereas Barry Baker is retiring after 39 years of dedicated services to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas he has served the students of the district as a teacher, counselor, and head counselor at Reed, Franklin, Hamilton, and Poly Schools, and at the California Academy of Mathematics and Science, and whereas serving as the unflappable center of the CAMHS counseling staff, he has taught college planning courses, supported dual enrollment at both the university and community colleges, college level, and helped to shape the STEM curriculum that embodies the mission and vision of the school. And whereas through numerous changes and challenges that required schedule and timetable adjustments, he masterfully maneuvered scores of students' schedules through the master schedule, testing schedule, and student placement needs, ensuring that progress towards diplomas remain uninterrupted, and whereas he has the personification of helpfulness to students as they reach for their dreams of outstanding academic performance and admission to the nation's top universities, and the exceptional standing and reputation that CAMHS has achieved is thanks in large part to the care he took to remove obstacles for each student he served. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Barry Baker for his significant and lasting contributions to the education of thousands of students.
It's been a pleasure. I'm going to miss you.
Congratulations.
Great work here, Barry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thirty-nine years has been a long time. But I've enjoyed it. I've grown as an individual and as a professional, and I appreciate that opportunity. Being a counselor for most of my career, it's a position where you do quite a bit of problem solving, which I enjoyed, that I like to solve problems. And I've learned that sometimes to solve a problem, you need to take the square root of a negative number, and then always put your work on a Mobius strip. I want to thank you all.
Well, for a counselor, there was a lot of math involved. Mr. Meyer?
My pleasure to call Cheryl Dennison forward, please. Whereas Cheryl Dennison is retiring after 41 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas she served the students of the district as a clerk typist, school data processing assistant, secretary, school secretary supervisor, and middle school office supervisor at Poly, Milliken, and Coverly Schools, and whereas she's an outstanding office professional who has run a busy office smoothly and effectively handling the many demands of students, teachers, staff, and parents with her characteristic skill, efficiency tact, and great sense of humor, and whereas she's an excellent problem solver whose diligence in resolving issues meant that those she supervised were able to concentrate on their own tasks to help create a school environment where office interaction supported greater academic achievements, and whereas her proactive work in support of the school's mission often prevented small issues from becoming larger ones, and her extensive knowledge of district operations and procedures, her dependable nature, her outstanding professional abilities, her hard work helped to create positive experiences and accomplishments that will be felt by the families of our communities far into the future. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Cheryl Dennison for her significant and lasting contributions to the education of thousands of students.
I started working when I was a student at Poly High School. Who knew it would lead to a district career? The secretaries I worked with at Poly always encouraged me to become a full-time employee. I truly learned from the duties I had which set me up for the work I would be doing in the next position and those positions to follow. I have been fulfilled by a rewarding career. Thank you to Chris Steinhauser for meeting with secretaries on a regular basis. Thank you also to Assistant Superintendents and the Board of Education members. Long Beach Unified is a great place to work.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes, Catherine Davis. Will you please come up?
No? Okay, I don't think she's here because nobody's stood up. So we have one more recognition, and let's see, that would be the Classified Employee of the Year, so we'll hand that over to Ken.
Good afternoon, President Craighead, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Steinhauser, members of executive staff. We had a fiesta on May 24th for this year's Classified Employee Celebration. There was over 580 employees that attended the event, which was more than last year. We had numerous volunteers and donations and contributions from around the Long Beach community, and it includes time for many of these people in this room. On behalf of the committee who organized the event, I wanted to thank every one of those persons and all the Long Beach businesses and organizations for their participation because we really couldn't do the event without any of them. I wanted to also give a moment to recognize our personnel commissioner, who wanted to be here to support the presentation of the Classified Employee of the Year, Terry Yuloshevsky. There are three dimensions are used in determining the Employee of the Year. They are how much the employee supports the educational mission of the district by contributing to the classroom support and/or business operations of the district, that the employee demonstrates a commitment to being a team player and a positive role model for others, and that the employee goes above and beyond in his or her performance. This year, there was 30 nominations for 16 employees for this award, and there were five finalists. There's a committee of employees who were on the selection committee this year, and we carefully review every nomination, including myself. There are Ann Colton from Human Resource Services, Chris F. T. from our Public Information Office, Susan Perkins from the Transportation Department, and Michelle Francis from CASA, Gilbert Bonilla from CSCA, and Everardo Avila, who you might know as the 2018 Classified Employee of the Year. The four finalists who stood out among the nominees were Elsa Bowe of the Accountant and Financial Services, Brenda Casman, Intermediate Office Assistant at Milliken High School, Mary Ann Lazatin, Middle School Office Supervisor at Hamilton, and Albert Marquez, Plant Supervisor at Gant. Our winner is a Speech Language Pathology Assistant who currently works at the Buffham Center. She is described by her coworkers as being inspirational to her field and arrives every day with a smile and an energy that is infectious. She is also an active contributor by finding new ideas to assist the other staff, to instruct the students, and actively searches the site to assist the 11 speech-language pathologists with various student cases. Ms. Amon has an incredible knack of connecting with students using her observations and experience. One coworker defined it as a sixth sense of understanding a student's need. She was also acknowledged for her versatility in adapting to any learning situation and was praised by her colleagues of the ability to step into the classroom on the site and intuitively provide the assistance the instructor and the student needed. I present to you our 2019 Classified Employee of the Year, Pamela Amon, from the Buffham Learning Center.
Hello. I would like to thank the Board for recognizing the Classified Employees and the Employee of the Year. I'm very honored to have won. I would especially like to thank the SLPs at Buffham who nominated me. I'm currently working as a Speech and Language Pathology Assistant. I've worked in the district as an instructional aid special and as a SLPA for 13 years. I started working in special education because both of my children have autism and have participated in special education. My son transitioned to Jan Ed in third grade and graduated with a diploma, and my daughter just completed the Adult Community Transition Program this last week. I understand how it feels to have a child who is nonverbal, so because of my daughter, I went back to school and while I was still working as an aide to get licensed to be a Speech and Language Pathology Assistant. Once I graduated, I actually passed on other positions offered to me to continue working at Long Beach Unified. I have been able to work at over 20 different schools, working with children from preschool through high school. It can be very difficult work, but very extremely rewarding. This past year, I was able to work at only one school, at Buffham, and I really felt I could became part of the team with the 11 SLPs. I've enjoyed working at Buffham this past year, and I'm truly honored that they nominated me and I was recognized as a 2000 Employee of the Year. But something happened this last week that has me very concerned that I might need to search for a new job. Let me give you a little background on the SLPA position first. The SLPA classification was created as an eight-hour position. A few years ago, the position was cut to six hours. So that was a nice pay cut. Now that I heard about a meeting last week about the negotiations for the classifieds pay raise that has the part-time workers paying for a portion of their benefits, so the full-time employees will not have to pay, but according to the chart given out, I would be paying 25% of my paycheck towards my benefits. That might not seem like a lot to you, but it really affects my budget, you know, with my family and my special needs children. So that's pay cut number two. We weren't given, as SLPA's, we weren't given the choice to have our hours reduced to part-time employees, and looks like we might have to pay for it. I sincerely hope that this proposal is not final and something else can be considered. I'm sorry to end on a sour note, but I need to speak on how these negotiations really affect me and many other classified employees who really depend on every hour of their paycheck. So once again, I would like to thank the Board for recognizing Classified Employees, for all their hard work that we do for the students of Long Beach Unified. I'd also like to thank my family for supporting me, and thank you very much.
So to our honorees, retirees, our Classified Employee of the Year, you're welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, or you may choose to take this opportunity to go and celebrate with your friends and family. We'll leave that up to you. But we will move on to public testimony on items listed on the agenda. And first, we have Adriana? Do we have Rosales? Adriana? Okay. And this is three minutes. Okay, so... Do we need to get the... Yeah. Okay.
Mi nombre es Adriana Rosales, y los nombres de mis hijos son Julio Cesar Osuna y Betsy Osuna. My name is Adriana Rosales, and my children's names are Julio Cesar Osuna and Betsy Osuna. Ellos actualmente estudian en la escuela Franklin. Yo quiero expresar mi preocupación con ustedes, estimados presentes. Mi hijo Cesar, Julio Cesar Osuna, ha sido víctima de bullying escolar en la escuela Franklin desde el año pasado. My children attend Franklin Middle School, and I want to express that my son Julio Cesar has been a victim of bullying since last school year. Son varias fechas, y él ha sido agredido, pero el día viernes 31 de mayo fue cuando algunos estudiantes trataron de ponerle una bolsa en la cabeza. Esto ha sido consecuentemente, y ha pedido ayuda a la escuela y al distrito, y no tengo respuesta alguna. So this bullying has occurred on several occasions, but one incident that occurred on May 31st, it was several students who placed a bag over his head, and we've asked help from the school continuously, but we've not received any answers. Realmente yo estoy preocupada porque mi hijo necesita ayuda urgentemente, su estado de ánimo está muy mal. I am asking for urgent help since he is not feeling very well. He's doing really badly. Yo creo que la expulsión no es apropiada. Necesitamos más intervención que apoye a los otros niños también. I feel that expulsion is not the appropriate thing. I think that we need other types of supports for the students. Creo que lo que estoy pidiendo es justo. He buscado mucha ayuda para mi hijo. He estaba tocando varias puertas. No he tenido ninguna respuesta. Como ya les dije, no es la primera vez que le pasa. Creo que esto es grave, ya que la escuela no me respondió. Este, tuve que enterarme que mi hijo fue agredido por una semana completa. Este, la directora no me dio la cara. Estoy preocupada. So again, I am asking for help. I think this is very serious. I have knocked on several doors. I found out that my son was aggravated for a whole week, and nothing was done, and the principal is not giving me any answers. Los acosos de mi hijo no fueron solo dentro de la escuela. Los niños siguieron acosándolo fuera de la escuela. Ha sido víctima de amenazas, de golpearlo. Palabras más fuertes. Una niña compartió su foto en las redes incitando a otros niños que la compartan para que lo agredan. And this bullying has not just occurred inside school, but also outside. He's been a victim of... There's a picture of him. A student posted a picture of him on social media, and she was instigating for other students to come and hurt him. Creo que necesitamos mucha ayuda en las escuelas, principalmente en la escuela donde sucedió esto. Este, siento que el servicio de la escuela no está preparado para estar donde están. No, no me quiero ver como que estoy en contra de la directora, pero como ya lo dije, mi hijo lleva desde el año pasado siendo víctima de bullying. Van varias veces que lo han agredido, y hasta ahorita no he tenido una respuesta. I feel that the school needs a lot of support. I feel that they are not prepared. Again, since last year, he's been assaulted or being a victim of bullying, and nothing has been done, and it's not... I feel that the principal is not responding. Creo que es todo lo que yo tenía que decir. Espero que con esto ustedes me ayuden, porque yo soy aquí para que me ayuden a mi hijo, pero también para que ayuden a los demás niños que no pueden ver, no hay quien dé la cara por ellos. Okay, so that's all I'd like to say. Again, I'm looking for support for my son, but not just for him, but for other students who are looking for support but are not receiving it. Es todo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Well, we are always sorry to hear about situations where our students are being bullied, but that seems like a matter that should be handled elsewhere and not in this public forum. So he's aware of this, so we can work on that. Okay. Our next speaker is Jerlene Tatum.
Good evening. My name is Jerlene Tatum, and I'm an LBUSD parent and LCAP Community Forum Planning Team member. I want to begin by saying thank you to the parent that came up before me to share her story and advocating for her child. She is an example of why resources directed towards school climate and social-emotional learning is crucial. And on behalf of the parents and community organizations that participated in the planning and implementation of two LCAP forums this year, held on October 20th and March 2nd, we want to thank Robert Tagorda of Equity Access in College and Career Readiness for sitting at the table with us. We also want to thank LBUSD staff, administrative staff, that assisted in the planning and the implementation of the forums. We thank Board members Kerr, Benitez, and Craighead for attending one or both of the forums. We believe that these forums are an example of what's possible when parents, community partners, and LBUSD sit at the table together. Although this opportunity was initiated as a result of a legal complaint filed against LBSD in 2018, we are thankful for this new relationship that is being formed, and we look forward to working to deliver additional forums to assist in the end, to assist in the creation of opportunities for parents and community members to provide input and recommendations for the LCAP. Tonight, you will be voting on the recommendations and voting on the LCAP, and we want to thank you for the recommendations that you took from us and specifically some of the data that was related to Cambodian students. So in closing, if I were to make a post, a social media post, I would say hashtag #OurChildrenMatter, hashtag #ParentsMatter, hashtag #ParentEngagement, hashtag LBUSD.
Thank you.
Quick question first, Mr. Superintendent. What kinds of services do we provide over the summer, Mr. Superintendent, in terms of either family support services and/or student? of either family support services and/or student mental health services?
I can address that, the LCAP piece, since this is public comment, I'll get to that. So just bring that back up.
Okay, we'll continue. Staff report, we have none. Public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. We have one speaker, Jim Luthingham.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jim Luthjohann. I'm the president and CEO at the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, where you are responsible for the oversight of Avalon K-12 School. And I'm here tonight not only wearing that hat, but also as a member of the Avalon Parent and Community Advocates Consortium. We're a fairly newly formed body of very concerned residents and parents regarding the quality of education, or I should say, the lack of a good quality education that most students on Catalina Island are being afforded. I'd like to also emphasize that I'm a former student in the LBUSD School District. I have immediate family members who've been teachers, administrators, psychologists. I'm very emotional about this. I apologize if you hear the voice crack. That's why, because this is really close to my heart. I've also been a parent of a student in the Avalon School briefly, and would like to have another student come and be a part of a better campus than the one that we currently have there. We have many concerns, most of which have been outlined in a variety of letters first addressed to Superintendent Steinhauser last July. My organization authored a letter, a handful of individual parents did, and we hadn't yet formed under this name, so it would have been more around a PTA type of body that responded initially, or that wrote initially. We were promised follow-up meetings, they never happened. My personal letter has never been responded to. I've left multiple messages asking for a follow-up and gotten none. Among the concerns that we addressed in a letter yesterday to Mr. John Meyer, I'll hit some highlights. We're very concerned, as I mentioned, about the quality of the education and how it's impacting all areas of our community. It's not just about the students. It's now trickling down or trickling out and affecting many others. We've lost senior management representatives in our business community because they're exiting the island. They're taking their children out of Avalon School and going elsewhere to give their children a better opportunity to learn and thrive. You can imagine, wearing my Chamber of Commerce hat, how upsetting that is for my business members, that they cannot now fill positions during peak demand periods where a tourist-based economy right now is when we need everybody and every seat and every place that we can and we have critical vacancies and we're having just as much trouble recruiting qualified applicants if they have school-aged children for the exact same reason. Doesn't take much digging around or much internet searching to find out how critical the problems are at our school. As a result of the poor learning environment, 80 kids, and we did a quick head count, we did an online poll, 80 kids have left Avalon School in 18 months, either going into homeschooling or fully leaving the island.
I'm not sure you were aware of that timer, but your three minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity. I can tell you that other members of my committee will be attending future meetings until we have results on the island.
Thank you. Personnel, Dr. Williams.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have the personnel report prepared by Deputy Superintendent of Education Services Ruth Ashley, approved by our Superintendent Chris Steinhauser. I will read the classified portion of the report first. There were 122 amendments, four leases of absence, one suspension without pay, one demotion, five resignations, seven retirements, four abolishments, and 103 rescissions. For the certificated portion of the report, there were 85 appointments, 350 in-service changes, four leases of absence, one separation, deceased, four resignations, eight retirements. Move approval.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out, when we do retirements, we hear of people who have very long careers within the district, and not all of them come before us for recognition. But I did want to point out that we have several classified staff who are retiring this year with 36, 38, 36, 41, 25 years of service, a couple of plant supervisors, and some office managers. And we know that our kids interact with our classified staff all the time. Sometimes they're the first face they see on a campus, and we know they do way more than what their actual job description is. So I just wanted to shout out those folks who are retiring after really long careers with us.
I think that's a good point to note. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0.
Yes, Madam Chair, one more thing. We have an appointment within our classified staff. Yumi, did you want to introduce is our new Business Services Director here tonight?
Business Director, Steve Bowie is with us.
Oh, welcome.
Welcome.
I think you're, it looks like you're prepared to.
Hello, my name is Hung Bowie. I also go by Steve Bowie. I just like to take this opportunity to thank the board and Executive Cabinet for this great opportunity to work with one of the best school districts in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Yep, welcome aboard.
Did you catch that, Board Member Kerr? Or you were ready for it? Did it almost pass us by, or were you ready for it?
I was ready. I had it highlighted, but I had to switch pages. Diana goes fast sometimes, so I had to slide right in there.
Okay, instruction.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Finance Report A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Finance Report B.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-0-1. Business Department Report.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Purchasing and Contracts Report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Superintendent Items.
Yes, Madam President and members of the board, we're pleased to announce, to recommend two students be readmitted to the schools within the district, Student 411 and Student 684, and they would be placed in the appropriate schools.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Unfinished Business? We have none. New Business? Local Control and Accountability Plan? Robert Tagorda?
Good afternoon, President Craighead, members of the board, executive staff, and members of the community. Thank you once again for continuing this dialogue regarding our Local Control and Accountability Plan. Since our last meeting on July 10th, we've incorporated the feedback that was provided during the public hearing. As was mentioned during the public testimony, we specifically added data on our Cambodian students as requested by a member of the community and ensured that that was included in our LCAP specifically. It also ties in really nicely with the discussions during the last community forum that we had in March, where that was part of the discussion there. The Los Angeles County Office of Education also completed its second review of our LCAP draft. Our LCAP draft passed their review, meaning that it met all of the compliance requirements that local educational agencies throughout California are required to uphold. All of their feedback was incorporated in various respects. They asked us to add additional language to enhance some of the details of our programs in the LCAP, which we made a point of completing. And so we present to the board something that has gone through over two months' worth of review from Lego and that we're confident is compliant with regulations of the LCAP. Most importantly, it captures the feedback that we've received from thousands of stakeholders, various individuals who participated in discussions at our parent committees, at our community forums, at voting processes, completing survey results, many different ways that have ensured that we incorporate all of the ideas that come from our community, our parents, our teachers, our students, and our staff. So on behalf of all of our stakeholders, I want to thank the Board of Education for supporting this LCAP process this year.
I would also like to, if we can put aside, folks in the audience, this was back there if people haven't seen it. These were presented at our last meeting. So, and I want to thank Robert and all the participants who have given us input regarding the over 40 recommendations, and these represent the top five recommendations. So I want to go through these one at a time because the green highlighted ones are the ones that we're going to propose that you put some resources on. For example, the first one, the after-school enrichment programs, we, all schools have resources to do after-school enrichment, Saturday school enrichment, and so whether they're a Title I school, whether one of the schools under our agreement with public advocates, all schools have resources next year to special programs that have been passed through the state of California that will receive the resources for the next two years to address the needs of our students. So one thing that we would recommend is not to put more money in there, but to use the money we have now and to have our providers put this input where you talk about having more STEM, music, and so on in the after-school programs. All of our Saturday programs do that now, but not all of our after-school programs. And then number two, the real-life economics ones, this has been a concern for many parents and staff focusing on financial literacy. So we're going to recommend that, again, we're working with some outside agencies who are actually going to bring to us free-of-charge financial literacy classes, not only for our students, but for our adults, for our employees, and for everybody. So we'd like to pilot that first, since it's free and it's a robust program, and I think we could come back to you at a future workshop. I'm going to skip down to the next one that talks about trade school pathway. We have a lot of pathways right now and we have some, as you all know, some apprenticeship programs going on, they're expanding. So we're working to expand those programs, so we would again recommend to go forth on that one. And then if you look at the social-emotional development and the school psychologist is talking about mental health issues, kind of delves tails into what you talked about, Dr. Benitez. So currently, and Dr. Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, but currently for our gen ed students, there are not a lot of services that go over the summer because everybody is on what we call a 10-month program. But there are some services if they're in summer school. Special ed students would have services provided, and you can come up with a reporting if you want, if it's tied to their IEP. So there are, as you all know, we have a very large summer school program this year. We've added over 20 sites. And at all the K-8 and elementary sites, there are counselors that are working. So that's a new component this year, because we're going to run around 15,000 to 17,000 kids in summer school, K-12 this year. So did you want to add anything to this special piece?
One of the good fortunes we have in Long Beach is wonderful community partnerships, and so we have relationship with the seven large community mental health agencies that are in town, who see about 2,000 of our students throughout the school year, and those services do continue through the summer. So we're extremely appreciative for the continuity of care as we take a break from school.
So what staff is recommending in the green sections, and if you recall, we only have about a million dollars of new money coming into the district for the LCAP, because all the other money is paying for the statutory, you know, raises and benefits of our employees. Because of our $122 million in the LCAP, 86% of it, you know, goes to staff. This pays for staff to lower class size and so on. So we have additional of roughly about a million dollars. So we're recommending that the board approve roughly four additional FTE, which are positions for the people in the audience, to address these issues of social-emotional development and mental health. And then we would come back to you in August to say where they would be deployed, but they would be deployed more of a systems level versus an individual school site level. And then a new position and a new need that has risen because of some things that are happening on the political scene as well as impacting our schools, we are getting some students who are newcomers to our community, who are coming to us mainly from Central America. And these are youngsters ages 14 to 16 who are coming new to our school, may not have been in schools before, but they're coming with a lot of trauma. And so we feel strongly that we need a liaison between our high schools, and again, as Dr. Brown talked about, we're fortunate in Long Beach, we have many nonprofits that support us, but a lot of these youngsters come with trauma, food insecurity, and other issues. So we would recommend that we do a pilot for next year of a liaison between our high schools and our community agencies to provide support to these young people. We truly don't know how many of these young people we're going to get, but I can tell you, within the last two weeks, one school received five new students. And with the statement by our president of, you know, potential increases on individuals being deported, this could have massive ramifications for our schools. And the other one is, we have many, many great partners with our parents, and there's, you know, lots of different parent groups, the CAC, D-LAC, E-LAC, and so on. And so we're recommending putting some money into parent engagement, but giving it to those committees to decide how it should be spent. So for example, this is just an example, okay? So Dr. Brown meets with the CAC on a monthly basis. She probably has on average about 100 some people. So we give them X amount of dollars to fulfill and to fund some of the recommendations that they have. They may want a recommendation on suicide prevention or inclusive practices or whatever. So we're recommending, just like we do with our students at our high school, how we give our individual high schools money for them to decide how to spend, that we do the same thing with our parents. They come up with an action plan, it would be their money to spend based on what they see as their particular issue. And that would take, if you approve that recommendation, in totality, that would be a million dollars. So, but I do want to thank Robert and Jerlene and all the other partners out there because it has been a very inclusive process and, and again, I'm thankful that Robert was able to send it to the county office ahead of time, because basically they said it's good to go once you approve the document.
And just for clarification, the money for these parent groups, that there would be some type of guidance with that?
Absolutely. So there would be, and it would, the money would be, we would come back to you in August to give a recommendation of how it would be doled out, but there would be recommendations on how it would be spent. And then there, just like with what we do with our high schools, we have a short little action plan that people say why they want to do it, how they're going to report out, and we would come back to you, just like we do in the board workshops, and report out how those resources are spent. So going again back to Dr. Brown's committee, I could envision her getting X amount of money and then coming back in November and March saying, this is what we did with these resources, this is the power. Because you've heard from our multiple parent organizations, they all have different recommendations, different needs. And this is, if this is approved, parents, this is what I would do. Many of you serve on multiple committees. I would have the different committees do vote on different things so you could maximize the money, because whatever one committee did could be open to the entire system.
Do we have any other questions or comments? I have a question about the recommendations you said that some of the stuff would be covered by the schools, and is this information available to the school sites?
Yes, so for example, if you look at the first one, extracurricular, we're spending about, between the money that we have under our settlement, the schools, and the new money that's just come in, we have about $10 million out there at our schools for extracurricular, Saturday school, and, you know, all these. What we need to do, for example, just take our RAP program, we need to work with all of our providers of our RAP program to make sure that they're infusing these recommendations from the parents. So if they're not infusing STEM in engineering and art and music, we need to ask that they do so. So, I mean, the Harmony Project is a great example, but that's only impacting certain schools. So we have about 7,000 students in our RAP program in dozens of our schools. Well, they may not all be doing these things. We do know for a fact that all of our Saturday school programs are including some of these activities because it's based on their interests. So Chris?
Now, Chris, I know that some of those programs have accountability components, like the Harmony Project, that looks at the success of the students as a result of being involved in that program. We get a chance to get reports on that, but in speaking about the, moving forward with some of the recommendations you just made, I would hope that we would tie that same kind of process to those programs as well to make sure that those, whatever the objectives that are being pursued, that we have a way of being able to determine whether or not we're meeting with success.
Yeah, we can work with our new assistant supervisor, Dr. Kale, she's there in the audience, to look at what metrics we could come back to you to report on.
And hopefully, those will be built in when the proposals are made so that we have a way of being able to follow and monitor.
Absolutely.
Two comments from my, Madam President, and I guess it's just nuancing some of the superintendent's comments. One is, with reference to the importance of the parent engagement and community engagement piece and the importance of these recommendations, I think two things for our community members here and our community members watching. One is that these recommendations come right out of the community convenings, right? So, these are concrete reflections of those recommendations with resources attached. So, it's not just about participating, but it's also about affirming the voices in those community meetings. And secondly, I'll speak to two areas on this comment. One is around the social-emotional supports, I think that we're working on as a district. Given the hateful and divisive language coming out of Washington, DC, with regards to the community liaison position, I think in the last couple of days, our immigrant communities have been targeted, not just here locally in Long Beach, but across our country. So, uplifting the importance that schools in our district play to support families, I think, is super important. So, I appreciate that recommendation. And I think also tapping into the partnership piece that you referred to, Dr. Brown, and our other community partners that are working as advocates on behalf of our newcomers, but also our established immigrant populations, is super important, given the national context that these comments are being made in, and given the work that some of the community partners like the Long Beach Community Defense Network, right? So, if ICE is active right now in Long Beach, there are groups that are there for us. I'll share more about that in my board report, but I just want to uplift that, you know, we are upholding the values here through these recommendations and that there are concrete resources attached to these recommendations. So, I just urge my colleagues to take that into consideration when we vote.
Okay, any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
We were...
It's okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification. So, I was trying to put my thoughts together when you said this, Mr. Superintendent. In August, what's going to happen? You're going to give it?
Yes, we would come back to you on two items. One, to say where these positions would, how they would be working. And then, the second piece is a recommendation, if you approve this, on how to give out the money for the parents.
Got it, got it.
And just one more quick thing. I know that for many of our after-school programs, our schools have already contracted for the next year with their after-school or their RAP provider. So, at this point, we're asking them to infuse things that we hope they're already doing, but if they're not, to step up. But I know this should give them some time, especially for the following school year, but really seeing if there's ways to work these items in this year.
There will be ways, absolutely. We meet with them on a regular basis, so that's not a problem. And where they may be lacking, we can provide support.
Okay, great.
Did we get a second?
Second.
I'm going to go with all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, passes five-zero. Okay, adoption of district's budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you have?
That was an aye, that was a yes.
That was a yes? I think I'm at abstentions now, but I already heard five-zero, so that's it. We passed it. List of candidates for graduation.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
I do have a question about our list of candidates. I wanted to see if we could get clarification on differentiating between the different census dates, January, June, August, and what that means?
So, as you can see in this document, eighty-nine students officially graduated in January. So, students, at the end of first semester, if they've met all the requirements, can graduate and start college the next semester.
Okay, got it.
So, then, the June is the traditional, and then you can see here, we have about a hundred and ninety students who it is estimated will graduate in August because they may be short credits. And so, if, years ago, we actually put all of our students, our EPA test students, on our campuses, and we actually run a very large independent study program through multiple sources, so that you can see it's one student from Avalon and so on. So, these are students who are just shy.
Making up credits.
Correct.
Basically.
So, ideally, if they all finish their credits, we'll have close to fifty-six hundred graduates this year.
Okay, awesome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes five-zero.
Prove program support services firms.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, could you get a bit of clarification on what this is about?
Sure. This, I know, would establish a bench of moving and storage firms for construction projects. So, this would just establish a bench of firms in which we can engage for construction move projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes five-zero. Approval of Proposition Thirty-nine, California Clean Energy Jobs Act Expenditure Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question regarding a language about an alternative funding source was identified for that item.
Sure. So, for the board building the H-back and the solar projects, maintenance and facilities funding has been identified.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes five-zero. Resolution zero-six-one-nine-one-nine-dashing, adopting compatibility, uniformity, and standardization for student automated machining and production equipment at the Long Beach Unified School District.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, excuse my ignorance on this, but what is CNC equipment? I may have missed it.
Computer something.
No, you, go ahead. Your department.
Computer numerical control equipment, this is Farker.
What is that?
I'm glad you asked that. Honestly, I'm really glad you asked that. I knew it had something.
I thought everybody, but I knew what CNC was, Ron.
Yeah, it's the latest updated equipment they're using in the labs for laser cutting, three-D printers, those kind of things. So, they're run by a computer. You program.
Why can't we just say laser cutting equipment?
It's the latest technology.
Because you have to code. You have to use the computer. Yeah, incredible stuff. Any further discussion on that one? And thanks again for asking, I wanted to know too. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes five-zero. Report of board members, Dr. Benitez, let's start with you.
Yes, I hope my colleagues and the public here indulge me. So, I was a...
We'll give you three minutes on the clock.
No way. I won't take up that many. So, I've just been reflecting, so it was a year ago, last year, that I got elected to serve on this board. And I'll give my full comments next month because I actually got technically sworn in in July.
And remember, you still have to work with us.
That's right, that's right. But again, got elected by the community members of Area Three in our district to serve on this board and represent the students in the communities that we serve. And I've tried my best to serve the students and families of our entire district, and again, I'll share more of these thoughts at our meeting in July. But the motivation behind me running, the motivation behind me being here these first eleven months are all around our student success and our students-first sort of motto. And that has also meant that I've asked a lot of questions, both here and in our other meetings at the district. And, you know, sometimes I've asked tough questions, and sometimes, some of the issues that I've raised, maybe folks have felt uncomfortable with those questions and/or issues, but I am committed to do my best. I'm committed to work with each and every one of my fellow board members here and of our team in the district, and I think I wouldn't be holding up my responsibility if I didn't ask the questions and raise these issues. So, I think public dialogue is good. I think debate is healthy, even if we don't agree, but if we don't even ask the questions, I think we're doing a disservice to our students, to our community members, and to our district. So, at no point, you know, and if it's happened, please call me out as your elected representative. I've never tried to undermine any of our work, any of our student success efforts. I've never made it personal. I've never tried to throw anyone under the bus with my comments or with my questions. I've never tried to personally embarrass anyone. And again, I think that we have a good team here in the district. Having said that, I think there are areas, and my colleagues here on the board, and I know executive staff, and our teachers and administrators would agree, there is areas that we can do better. And so, I just wanted to reiterate that I think we all have the good and right intentions and that my questions come from that place of our collective success. So, I just wanted to highlight that as part of me fulfilling my obligations and responsibility as an elected school board member, but as me also being part of our collective efforts to build a stronger school district. So, I wanted to end my comments with that board member. My second comment is in relation to, and I'm going to give a number here and a plug, our Long Beach Community Defense Network that, again, is there for support for families, community members that are either experiencing interactions with ICE and Homeland Security and/or are witnessing interactions with ICE and Homeland Security. So, the number, our immediate number here in Long Beach is five-six-two-two-six-nine-ten-eighty-three. Five-six-two-two-six-nine-ten-eighty-three with regards to any interactions with Homeland Security and/or ICE here in Long Beach.
Thank you. I have always appreciated your questions, and I, you know, echo your sentiment about that's what we do as elected officials, is we have to, you know, represent our communities, and part of doing that is asking questions and being part of the debate.
Yeah, but the press doesn't always cover it that way, and then there's some chatter that goes around too that tries to single either individuals out from our district or misconstrue questions and comments that we make.
Well, I feel like we have a united front, so we won't let outsiders disrupt what we have going on. And we'll, I'll leave it at that one. Mr. Meyer?
Well, thank you, Dr. Benitez. We all appreciate your membership on this board, but I will remind you, your job is secure, you're not running free election yet.
That's why I said comment, John, because it's not election year for us.
Just briefly, what wonderful commencement and graduation ceremonies. Sato was marvelous to see the first graduating class go through there. Lowell Promotional was delightful, as was Rogers', and the Wilson graduation was just a real pleasure to see. Not one act of tomfoolery. Those young people were so respectful and well-behaved, and I want to applaud the adults because they kept their comments to a minimum. All those parents were there to see their kids and hear their kids, not we adults. So, it was delightful. I'd like to share a good story, if I may. A teacher in one of our Eastside schools, a very successful school, as all of our schools are, had been there for nearly twenty years, and a young teacher who was in her second year working there was going to be bumped because of declining enrollment or whatever the issue was. This experienced teacher, Nancy Schmidt, stepped forward and said, "I want to move and make room for this young teacher to break in in our district at this school." So, Nancy recommended, and she was placed at Adams Elementary School from the Eastside School, and that just reflects on the good spirit that our teachers have, I think, and the wonderful, wonderful devotion they have to the welfare of kids and to their colleagues. So, share that briefly. And one comment, if I may, too, about Gonzalo Moraga, who was my student when I taught at Wilson, and has been at Wilson for eight years as a co-principal, and he's moving to a great new assignment at McBride. But sometimes, these changes take place at the last minute, and an individual who's deeply imbued in the community doesn't have time to be recognized by the community because these changes come upon us so quickly. So, I just want to let you know, Gonzalo, I received many, many telephone calls from parents in the community lamenting the fact that we're losing you, but you have a great new assignment, that they wanted to appreciate all the great work that you did at Wilson High School. So, thank you, Gonzalo Moraga.
Very nice. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, again, Pete, congratulations on your retirement. I don't know how many more times we're going to see you at these meetings. This is it? But again, congratulations, Pete, on a wonderful career that you've had in this district over so many years, and the wonderful work that you've done to help students become the people that they are. Really appreciate your work. The last board meeting, I talked about the chess club, but I neglected to mention some other essential pieces of that program at Barton Elementary. I neglected to talk about the people there who were making this possible, and these folks are helping students on their own time, moving, transferring students from one area to another for chess tournaments, and also helping to teach the children how to play chess. Susan Scott from Barton Elementary, Stanley Kirk from Barton Elementary, James Minnis from Barton Elementary, and Ms. Feliciano from Bobby Smith Elementary. Also, I didn't talk about the Science and Engineering Fair that we had recently, and I did serve as a coach, a judge this year, not a coach, but a judge. And I had the fifth graders, and I just want to talk about one of those presentations. This young lady had a project where she was looking at the extrasensory perceptions of bats, and how bats, some who can, who will locate their prey by their, the extrasensory ability that they have, and some who don't. So, seventy-five percent of the bats are engaged in that, and twenty-five percent of the bats don't do that at all. They just get their food from a local source. And how that concept could be extended to people, especially people who were blind or were born with a disability, how those folks were able to develop extrasensory perceptions based on those impediments. And this was a fifth grader sharing this with me. That kind of activity went on and on throughout my review of those fifth graders and their projects, and I'm just saying to myself, this is an amazing thing that we have going on in our district, to see the future of our students and some of the things that they are engaged in, where they are at intellectually, in terms of their development, and what that really provides and promotes for this Long Beach Unified School District. It was very, very heartwarming to be there to see all of this. And congratulations to our classified employee of the year, well-deserved honor.
Okay, thank you. This is Cur.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to be with all of you again. The energy of this board meeting is also very different than the anxiousness that we experienced last week around all of the impending administrative promotions and moves. And I just want to thank all of our school community for being so receptive to those changes. We know that they can be difficult to lose people that you love and to be getting people that you're not so sure about, but the energy... that you're not so sure about, but the energy around the moves has been really hopeful. So thank you to all of the staff for that. I wanted to welcome Dr. Christine Kelly, the newly-elected president of Taub and the board, and say welcome. It's good to see your face back there. I know you've been here for a long time, but I wanted to say hello, that we look forward to working with you and your board. And really thank Barry Welsh for his almost 40 years of service to the school district. He did not come before us to receive recognition. He doesn't like to do that, but I wanted to give Barry a shout-out for all the work that he's done, especially at Jordan High School over the years before his work at Taub. We had great graduation ceremonies. I went to Hughes Middle School, had some location issues earlier in the year, and they ended up at Blair Field. And as a huge dirtbag fan and season ticket holder, it was delightful to be at Blair Field. And what a fun venue for an eighth-grade promotion. There was plenty of seating for all the parents. It was bleacher style, so everybody could see. The students were on the field between the backstop and home plate. So thank you to Ed Samuels and his staff for a warm welcome. Jordan High School is always a wonderfully celebratory and brief commencement ceremony, an hour and 32 minutes. We started a couple of minutes late, so we want to say that we did it an hour and a half. So congratulations to our Jordan High grads. And I closed out the week at the EPHS graduation, as I've done for the five years that I've been on the board. And I just want to give a special shout-out to those 457 graduates from EPHS. Every kid who graduated from EPHS has a different story. They're there for different reasons, some because they choose it, some because of circumstances that are completely out of their control. But those 457 made an effort, they set a goal, and they followed through. And I want to give a special shout-out to Dr. Mendoza, the EPHS teachers and staff for their support of these students. They create a nurturing and welcoming and inclusive environment that make the students feel a part of something bigger than themselves. And I think that's a really difficult task when you're talking about kids who are on various sites around the district doing independent study, but they've worked really hard over the last two years to do community-building events and to do events that all of their students are invited to participate in. So congratulations to our EPHS Phoenix grads and to Dr. Mendoza and his staff.
Thank you. I'm just going to do a brief, like, spring recap. Back to open house for the high schools, I managed to visit all three of the high schools where I present in one evening, which is the first time I've ever been able to do that. I was a little bit early to Millikin, so most of the teachers were not in their classrooms, but I was there. That's got to count for something. Also, at Stanford, we have a Spelling Bee student named Deana Miranda, and she went to Washington DC to participate in the National Spelling Bee. Last year, she was the first Long Beach Unified student to do so, to participate in the National Spelling Bee, and now she's gone two years in a row. So congratulations to Deana Miranda for representing the school district so well. And also, I guess about a month ago, I'm not sure, Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell recognized some teachers as Teachers of the Year. So I want to mention Amy Brown of Stanford, Tammy Karsten of Powell, Charlie Dotson from Poly, Kenneth Fisher from Cabrillo, who drove back to Long Beach from the solar boat competition with students in Temecula. He drove back to Long Beach to receive the award, have his picture taken with Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell, and then drove back to Temecula. Ted Hollister from Wilson, Marla Kleeman from Wilson, Amy Levek from Wilson, Roberto Lacone from Oropesa, Andrew Osman from Poly, Nika Rumian from Stevenson, and James Willert from Lakewood. So a lot of our teachers were recognized. I think out of the dozen or so teachers recognized, 10 of them were from Long Beach. And then last night was an album event, and not only retirees were recognized, but scholarships were given out to our high school seniors. And correct me if I'm wrong, it was like $20,000, $25,000 in scholarships? It was $24,000, $24,000 in scholarship money to graduating high school seniors, really incredible. So thank you, Album, for that. And then just, you know, congratulations overall to all of our graduating seniors. It's just really something to be at those graduations, hear those speeches from the graduating seniors, and be a part of that celebration. It's probably one of my favorite things to do all year, just the joy of it all. Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, just a couple of things. One, I just want to say thank you to all the staff who have worked so hard this year. This has been a very, very busy year, and great things have gone on. And so it is now time to rest for some because this year, we're going to have one of the largest summer school programs we've ever had. So we'll probably have close to 17,000 kids in summer school starting Monday. So a lot of great, great things going on, a lot of enrichment going on at the same time. And I'd also like to thank everybody in this building and all of our community partners who have taken on interns. So if you see a lot of high school kids, they're in this building, doing great things. And so we have a lot of interns. We are, for the folks who don't know, we just purchased 35,000 new Chromebooks, and they're actually being choreographed by six of our interns, who are actually going there, counting them, and taking out what we call Gen IV, replacing them with the Gen VI. And come the fall, those 35,000 Chromebooks that are the old Chromebooks will be going home to students in the district. So we're pretty excited. So it's a lot of great things going on, and you, me, and your team, I just want to thank you to approve almost a billion-dollar budget that is well-balanced with good reserves and great things happening. It's not an easy task, and you have probably, I'm really biased here, but you probably have one of the best budgets of any urban district. So thank you. So, and everyone, rest.
Okay. Yes?
An announcement, if I may. Mr. Littlejohn, thank you for staying. I want to thank you for taking the trip from Catalina Island to come over here. You know, it's pretty easy for Long Beach parents, Lakewood parents, Signal Hill parents to come to a meeting, but to come from Catalina Island, you've got a booked passage on the boat and hope that you get out of this meeting in time to catch a boat back tonight, or you have to pay for a hotel and spend the night here. So your message was well-heard about your concerns on the island. I shared the detailed letter from Cindy Cassidy with our superintendent, and you can rest assured that I'll do everything within my power to follow through on your interests. Thank you for coming.
Okay, do we have any other announcements?
Yes, just one. This Sunday, the 23rd, at 1:00 PM, is the dedication of the recently renamed Poly Auditorium, which is the Andrew Osman Auditorium, or as it's affectionately being called on the campus, the Os-matorium. So please join us, if you can, to celebrate the great work of Andy Osman at Poly High School these last couple of decades. We'd love to see you at 1:00 PM.
Okay, any other announcements? All right, be safe out there. Thank you for coming. Oh, motion to adjourn? Adjourn.